Welcome to the July 22, 2013 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Assistant Pastor Scott DeClaire from the Troy Assembly of God with us to give us the invocation this evening. Please rise for that and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards. Pastor?
Thank you for having me. Let's pray. Father, we come to you in Jesus' name. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day you've given us to serve you and love you. And Lord, I pray that you would just bless this meeting. I pray you'd bless Mayor Slater and all the council, Lord God. I pray that you'd give them wisdom. Lord, your word promises that if we ask for wisdom, you'll give it to us generously. I pray, Lord, you pour out your wisdom today on this meeting, Lord God. I pray that every decision would be an honoring decision to you, Lord God, and would benefit the citizens of Troy. Lord, we commit this whole meeting into your hands in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Please come in and sit down. Or stand against the wall. That's okay. The Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Councilmember Teetz?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby excuses the absence of Councilman Pennington at the City Council Regular Meeting of July 22 due to being out of the county.
Move by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and supported by Councilwoman McGinnis that we excuse Councilman Pennington due to being out of the county this evening. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our first order of business tonight is certificates of recognition and special presentations. So I will be coming down to the podium to present a great recognition to the 2013 Girls' Varsity Soccer Team Division Champions from Troy High School. If the soccer team could meet me up front, please. That applies this evening. Coach Bryan?
Yes.
Want you... I'm going to read the proclamation on behalf of the city to your entire team and yourself, if I could. This is a certificate of recognition to Troy High School 2013 Girls' Varsity Soccer Team. Whereas the Troy High School 2013 Girls' Varsity Soccer Team won the Michigan High School Athletic Association Division One Girls' Soccer Championship on June 15 in Grand Rapids, beating Granville High School in a come-from-behind fashion, two to one for the title. And whereas, special commendation is due to Captains Jamie Hockey, Allison Holland, and Madison Hirsch, and team members Sydney Alexander, Michelle Babs.
Not present.
We'll get to you guys. Cammie Barnett, Brooke Bogdanovich, Andy Buzidi?
Addy.
Is that close?
Addy Buzi.
Okay. Sorry.
It's okay.
Nadine Ratu, Jenna Kabiloff, Felissa Drayton, Grace Goodrich, Brittany Guitar, Natalie Longroy, Katie Luongo, Danny McComol, Kayla Porter, Liz Rhodes, Sarah Trokali, Sarah Weidman, Erin Rubel. Is that close?
Yes.
And whereas, this has been an exciting, hard-fought soccer season with a 15-6-3 record, and we are proud of the title you have earned and the winning reputation you have brought to our community and your school. This is the program's first state championship since 2003. And whereas, we applaud Girls' Varsity Soccer Head Coach Brian Suwizlek, Assistant Coaches Hank Thonies. Is that close?
Tanus.
Tanus. Stu Givens, Joey Francini, and Megan Sermel, and Trainer Mike Simi, for their commitment to the Troy High Girls' Varsity Soccer Team. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Troy City Council of the City of Troy commends the Troy High School 2013 Girls' Varsity Soccer Team for their fine efforts and extends this token of affection and admiration with which you are regarded in this city. Be it further resolved that the City Council and the City of Troy joins the citizens of this community in appreciation and celebration of the 2013 Troy High School Girls' Varsity Soccer Division One State Champions. Signed this 22nd day of July, 2013, and is signed by myself and all members of City Council. Congratulations on your success.
Thank you.
I would also like to indicate that Bryan was awarded the largest school coach of the year this year.
Thanks.
For the largest school. Congratulations, Bryan, on that. That's it. I was also handed a note that this is... This team got the Academic Award from Michigan High School Soccer Association, and in order to get that award, you have to have at least a 3.3 grade point average. This team had a 3.6 grade point average. You're obviously doing a great job.
Thanks. Thanks, Mayor Slater. Thank you, City Council and Mayor Slater, for the award and the recognition. We put a lot of hard work into this, but I think we're proud of the fact that we won a state championship, but we're also proud of the fact that these girls are so committed to their studies in the classroom, too. That recognition of a 3.6, and we also had, I believe, five academic all-state seniors on this group. So they're student athletes, student first, athlete second. So not only are they performing on the field, they're also performing off the field, and we're really proud of that at Troy High School. Thank you, Mayor.
Our next order of business is C2, and Carla Reed will make a presentation on behalf of the Troy Nature Center as the Executive Director. Welcome this evening.
Thank you. Thank you for welcoming me and taking the time. The Troy Nature Society is announcing its annual ice cream social open house event. This will be held at the Lloyd A. Stage Nature Center on Sunday, August 11, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., and this is a fun, family-filled event. We serve ice cream Sundays. Ice cream is donated by Ray's Ice Cream of Royal Oak, and we have fun family activities. We're going to be doing guided trail walks. We're going to have a children's storytime, and there's crafts and activities, and guests are welcome to see our newest addition to the nature center, which is our Observation Beehive. And there's also going to be a beekeeper from Oakland County who is going to be showing us how to extract honey. But we wanted to make the public aware, and the City Council and members of the City Council, that we are having this event, and we're inviting you to come. This is a free event to the public. There is no charge, but we do ask that attendees register at our website at www.troynature society.org so that we can have enough good ice cream and fun supplies for everyone. So thank you for taking the time, and I hope to see everyone there. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. We'll be there. Our next order of business is C3, a Transit Center Status Report presented by City Engineer Steve Van Det. Good evening, Steve.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's been a while since I've been here to give you an update. I'd like to give you a brief update on the construction status, and I brought along some pictures. Construction has been moving along very smoothly. We are pretty much complete with the exterior of the building, all the structure, the skin of the building, windows have gone on, and the focus now is on the interior and the Doyle Drive and site improvements. Just a couple of pictures I want to show you. The first one on the top is the east elevator and stair tower, and I don't think the leaves are even on the trees yet, so this is probably in April sometime. And the picture below that is a picture of the platform being formed up, the steel being installed and ready for pouring the concrete. Next slide I'll show you, there's the platform completed. That's the white ribbon there on the left with the yellow next to the tracks, and we have the light poles installed, and the space for the shelter is installed. Platform is about 200 feet long and 12 feet wide, and it extends from... out from the face of the elevator tower. Picture down below that is the Transit Center building on the east side, Troy side, attached to the elevator and stair tower. And as you can see, the bridge is already in place. The interior is pretty rough. The floor is installed, and this big item that's taking up a lot of space right there is one of the elevators that's soon to be installed. And here we have on the top a picture of the Amtrak train going by, and just above the train, you can see there's the crash wall that was installed, and we're standing, of course, on the bridge looking down. And the bridge is open right now, but that will be covered with glass. And then the picture below it, I'm standing on the end of the platform looking towards the bridge and the elevator towers. And I don't think you can see it in this picture, but there is glass. There is glass on the elevator towers. I think the Troy Tower is still open. And this is the underside of the bridge. The metal panels have been installed, and glass has been installed, and this is the crash wall here. And the round openings that you see, those are ventilation openings for the tower. And finally, this is the bridge. It's been set in place, obviously, and painted since you saw it last, and the tarp is covering the concrete flooring. And this week, they will be putting on the glass on the bridge. So we are about 60% complete, and as I mentioned, work is starting to focus on the interior with interior walls and fixtures and finishes, and also site work. Doyle Drive right now is closed at the Transit Center site. They're replacing a portion of Doyle, reconstructing it, along with the bus slips, and they're going to be doing some reconfiguration of the parking lot. And we expect that parking lot work and the sidewalk and all that to be done in about two weeks. So we are moving right along towards completion of the Transit Center in August, late August, I'm estimating, and opening the center in September. We'll switch gears and talk about the status of the land. As we all know, there was a decision in the Court of Appeals that was adverse to the city as far as the ownership of the land. And the status of the land is something that we are working towards resolution on with the City Attorney's Office, with FRA, with MDOT, with FTA, and a lot of people, and last but not least, the courts. The city will file a leave to appeal with the Supreme Court on July 26. That... the outcome of that leave to appeal, there could be several outcomes, and depending on what the outcome is, we would go in one direction, and if it's another outcome, we would go in another direction. The bottom line, though, is at the end of the day, we will own the property. We continue to own the property. Previously, there was a motion, this is right after the Court of Appeals decision, there was a motion for reconsideration that the city filed, and a motion for immediate effect that Grand Sacra filed. Both of those motions were denied at the Court of Appeals, and so we have the status quo, which is the city continues to own the property. We have not suspended construction during this... working through this land status issue because if we were to do that, we would incur substantial cost for delay, for materials. The timeline for resolving the property issue is much, much longer than the construction timeline, and if we were to suspend construction, we would incur substantial costs for which we would probably not be reimbursed from the Federal Rail Administration. So we have a contract with MDOT to construct the Transit Center, and that's what we are The FRA, the monies for the Transit Center come from the FRA to MDOT, and MDOT releases those to the city for reimbursement for construction cost. And since the land issue came up, the FRA has suspended reimbursements for us temporarily. That suspension is a precautionary measure until such time as the path towards acquisition or settling, I should say, of the land issue is made clear. It's a temporary suspension as soon as... and those paths towards resolving that issue may take... there's many branches, many paths that may be taken, and that's going to take some time. We hope in the coming weeks and few months that the path towards resolving the issue is made more clear. We are proceeding with an appraisal of the property, and that appraisal is necessary for either acquiring the land through condemnation, through settlement with Grand Sacra. That appraisal is crucial towards resolving the land issue, and we expect that appraisal in the coming weeks. I mentioned... I think I mentioned that we are filing a leave to appeal on July 26. We do not know when the Supreme Court will rule on that leave to appeal, but we are fairly certain that it will not come before September, may not come before October or November or even the end of the year, and it's really difficult to predict, as Lori knows, when the Supreme Court would act on that. A lot of people ask, "Well, what is your backup plan?" Well, we have several plans, legal strategies, that we have identified for resolving the land issue. However, those strategies, we feel, would not be appropriate for us to discuss in an open forum, given that there is an active lawsuit proceeding on the land issue. Meanwhile, the construction is continuing. We, as I said, hope to be complete in August and open in September. And as we work towards resolution of the land issue, then resumption of the reimbursements to the city for construction will take place. At the end of the day, the city, and perhaps the city attorney can expand on this, the city will own the property at the end of the day. No matter what path is taken to that outcome, the city will own the property. We continue to own it today, and we will own it at the end of the day when the Transit Center is complete, and... but probably not, perhaps not, when the station is open. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them for you.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Van Det. Since the FRA has suspended reimbursement to the city, how are our contractors being paid?
We are continuing to make payments. It is a budgeted activity. The way the budget is structured, all of the projects that are reimbursement projects, which are... we have road projects and all kinds of projects that are reimbursement-based, the dollars are budgeted for the city making payment, and then there's also a reimbursement coming on the back end to reimburse us. So the money is there in the budget for us to pay it, and we continue to do so, and we believe we are optimistic that reimbursements will be resumed and we will be made whole. We have a contract with MDOT to build the station. That's what we are doing, and we're living up to our contract. The land issue is really a separate issue, but obviously related, needs to get resolved, and I'm sure it will.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
I have two questions. Thank you for the report, and I'm not sure if these two questions are best suited for you to answer, or if you think someone else would be better suited. But one is, we talked about having some sort of grand opening or an event when the public will be able to use this event. Do you foresee that that's still going to happen, or will that probably be contingent on us figuring out the land issue?
I do foresee that happening. We are planning a grand opening event for some time in September. The date has not yet been determined, but we are planning on doing that, yes.
Okay. And then my other question, I know construction and the legal issues are probably the more pressing issues at this point, so we've been really following those closely, but previously in reports that we received where we got updates, we were also being updated more on the economic development aspect of things as well in terms of working with vendors and other people that may be utilizing the interior of the space, and I know that's a little bit far out. Like I said, construction is the more pressing issue, but are there any updates on what's happening with the inside of the space?
I would refer that. That is being worked on by Mark Miller and Glenn Leipen, and perhaps, Mark, you might be able to comment on that effort.
Yes. As you know, there's a new president of the Troy Chamber of Commerce, and we have worked with Ara to update him and start bringing him along with where we're going, and we have not produced any bid specifications along those lines, but we're moving towards doing just that.
And can we ask that maybe the next time we do an update, that could be included, too? I know it probably will take some time to make sure that the chamber's on board with a new person at the helm, but as you get additional information, will you share that with us?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions? Just one question on the road coming in.
Yes.
I thought I saw in the report that that was going to be closed down, and the work is going to be on the road. Is that accurate?
Yes. Doyle Drive is closed. It closed about a week ago. It takes... estimated to take about three weeks to do that construction, and it's moving along on schedule, and within a couple of weeks, it should be reopened. As far as the shopping center is concerned, we've received no complaints from the stores or the patrons or anyone. There's easy ways... easy ways to get around the construction area.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you. Welcome. There are no carryover items, so our next order of business is... or public hearings. So our next order of business is public comment for items on the agenda. And for those citizens that plan to speak at either of the public comments sections this evening, please review the rules and regulations portion of the agenda, as we will strictly enforce those rules. Our first speaker is Mark Reinhardt, residence, to speak on O1A, O3G, O5.
Dash one, dash seven. And I apologize for my conversation last week. I'll try to curve my tongue. I don't want to, you know, desensify the ears of the hate Janet crowd. O1 mentions a name named Alan Key. If you Google his name, you'll also see he's also a computer troll on the net. Okay? You're also going to see somebody named... that old dash three Jen something in the following week. If you Google her name on the net, pretty soon you're going to see the word "computer troll" next to her name. Computer trolls are people who come into nets and they just spill hate. And I got these names off of something called Hate Janet. Now getting to point 51 is, remember Mayor Slater, when you and I was in trial with Mayor Schelling, and I'm sure you're going to honor the promise of a former mayor on your side of the aisle, said that I had the privilege of looking at the books and budgets of both the City of Troy and the City Chamber of Commerce, a personal, close look, and at the time I said, "I don't have the CPAs to do that." But looking at point... But looking at point five seven, I think I might have found the CPAs to do that, and I'm going to give them my promise that I will ask underneath their thing, because I know you will honor Mayor Schelling's promise. If not, I will put her down as a liar and a computer troll, and I will continue to do to her what I'm going to do to the rest of them. Have a good day. I'll see you at the next three minutes.
That is all that have signed up this evening to speak on items on the agenda. Our next order of business is response to public comment. Is there any response? We removed two postponed items. There are none. So we move to regular business. Boards and committee appointments, there are no mayoral appointments this evening, and I will turn the microphone over to Mayor Pro Tem Fleming for other appointments.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two appointments tonight and one nomination. First, resolve that Troy City Council hereby appoints the following nominated individuals to serve on the boards and committees as indicated. The Liquor Advisory Committee, appointment to Matt Binkowski for the term expiring January 31, 2015. Second nomination to the Traffic Committee, for Tim Branstadter for a term expiring January 31, 2015. And if we want to vote on those, then I will make the nomination, the next nomination.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and supported by Councilman Campbell that we nominate Matt Binkowski for the Liquor Advisory Committee for the term that expires 1/31/2015, and Tim Branstadter for the Traffic Committee for the term that expires 1/31/2015. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Pitner?
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolve that Troy City Council hereby forward the following nominated person to serve on the Board and Committee as indicated to the next regular City Council meeting for action. To the Zoning Board of Appeals, I am nominating Paul McCowen for the term expiring January 31, 2015.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and supported by Councilman Henderson that we nominate Paul, was it McCollum?
McCowen.
McCowen for the Zoning Board of Appeals, term that expires 1/31/2015. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Pitner?
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. I-3, there is no request for a closed session this evening, so I-4, we will take no action.
That's correct, Mayor. I-4 has been pulled by the city administration.
That moves us to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to pull this evening? Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Support?
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and supported by Councilwoman McGinnis that we approve all items on the consent agenda as printed. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Pitner?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you are here on a consent agenda item, they have all been approved this evening. Our next order of business is memorandums and future council agenda items. There is an announcement of a public hearing, K-1, A and B. Any discussion? We will move to public comment for items not on the agenda. Mark Reinhardt, resident.
Thank you, Mayor Slater, for letting me continue my comments. The two pages tonight that I put forth is, they had the two people that I mentioned forehand about the problem. One side with the picture of the Slater is all the different Facebook pages that attacked the last mayor. They almost slandered her, they called her all types of names. Unfortunately, it activated me, because I really didn't care. But when somebody is attacking a mother with a Marine in the service, it activated me. I'm a veteran, and I protect all veterans, no matter what side of the aisle they're on. And because of this, and because, one, during the trial of the Mayor Schelling thing, we had Troy police laughing at the stand, saying they're going to pack me up and move me out of this city. We had other ones bragging about how I got arrested by putting the foyer in, and this is how many people I trust in the city. Okay? This is how many. So I am tracking a lot of people, and I'm getting a lot of help, especially, I do smoke a cigar once in a while, and I stop at most of the cigar places all over the city. They know who I am, and they know how many times I got picked up. And if I want to start an argument, I have to, I try to defend Troy. And what I get is wrath, completely wrath of businessmen that were forced out of this city by police tactics, just like my supporter, that there's a Troy policeman sits inside Hooters from 1:00 AM till it closes, sort of like how they got rid of the Elks Club in this city. Now, if the Troy police wants to run this city like a secret police force, having their mayor in charge, that's fine. I can operate like that, and I'll treat you the same like you treat me. And I tell you, I'm more than $100,000 computer person, okay? And I know I'm effective, and you can just see Keel's name is just the beginning. And I got about 150 people that pretty soon be on the net as computer trolls. You have a good day, and I hope you rest as good as I do.
There are no council referrals this evening, so our next item of business is council comments. Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes, Mayor. Many of you know we had a severe storm come through our city last Friday, and some of our residents were severely affected, trees down, power lines down. Cleanup effort is ongoing. Our city manager put out a report on this. City staff has reported on this. But I'd like the city manager at this time, if you would, just to tell us what city staff is doing to assist our residents in this cleanup effort and what we can and cannot do as a city, what our plan is.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Fleming. I will say that on Friday night, I think the storm that cut through the northeast section of the city of Troy, I really think we all knew a storm was coming, but we didn't realize the severity. Nobody counted on the severity of that storm. But what's very impressive is when you read the email accounts from the police department, the fire department, and the public works department, and from the actual boots on the ground, people who are real team players and working together to make sure that everything they could do to keep safety as the number one priority. It was very impressive, and it was very encouraging. And then when we met at the DPW on Saturday morning with the fire chief and police chief and DPW person, Tim and Kurt and other personnel, to determine what exactly, because of the magnitude, and we didn't, we really didn't anticipate the magnitude of the damage, to determine what we were going to do. And Kurt put out a pretty nice information piece that, you know, said we would look at fully blocked roads first and blocked driveways second, partially blocked roads and dangerous hanging limbs, and then block sidewalks and brush in the right of way, in that order and that priority. And they were ahead of schedule. The reality is, what we determined on Saturday morning was, whatever it took to help the residents out and getting the brush that was in the right of way that was brought there to get rid of it. And that's the, that is certainly the priority, and that's the direction we gave. We obviously can't go in everyone's backyard, as you know, and take everyone's brush that was in the back. However, we will do everything we can to get the brush out of there for the residents and help out. So that was the priority, as I mentioned, and that was the direction that we gave.
Thank you very much.
Just to follow up on that, so if a resident puts the brush at the front on the street, are they to expect that to be taken care of?
We want to get all the brush out of there that's in the right of way. So if it's up there and we're coming through, we want to get rid of it.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, there's a limit to that, Mayor, and, you know, as we go through. But we certainly have given direction to err on the side of getting rid of the brush. And some of it's not really brush. Some of it's pretty significant stuff, as you know, right?
My neighbor wouldn't call it brush.
Yeah.
Right. It's huge. Yeah, on behalf of myself also, we lost power for a little over 48 hours, and the only damage is the beer in the fridge. So I appreciate, appreciate that. Any other council comments? I have a couple. Councilwoman McGinnis, did you want to go first? Kind of piggybacking on to brush and some other, we've gotten some correspondence from some of our residents regarding snow removal on sidewalks and, you know, mowing of the grass near the road. And we get emails about why don't we plant flowers, you know, in the right of way anymore? And just, Brian, I know you weren't here when we made some of those decisions a couple, three years ago. And we had a study session, we talked about that back a couple, three years ago, and I think it's time to have another study session. And if I could get consensus from the table, August is probably not a good month, but if we could shoot for September to have a study session to discuss some of those items again, especially before the snow falls. Because I think we do need to reevaluate. I think we've talked about that in the past, some of the things that we've done in the past couple of years that we maybe need to reevaluate. So if I do have some consensus here at the table?
Absolutely.
Okay. I know August is busy, so maybe we could shoot for September. Thank you. The other announcement, I think I should at least let the public know that there are going to be open council seats in November, and you need to get your packet back by August the 13th. So I want everybody to be aware that if you are planning to run for an open seat on council in November, you have a deadline of August 13th, and you can call the city clerk's office or look online to look at the procedure that you need to follow for that. I just thought it was necessary to do that. Councilwoman McGinnis?
Just to follow up with the comments that you made about the study session, I think specifically in regards to an email that we received last week, and it looked like a lot of staff, time had already gone into at least responding to some citizens' concerns. But I agree with what you've said, Mayor Slater. Whether or not we make any changes, I think it's probably a good time for us to revisit the issue. At least it will bring some publicity, because there were some changes made at some point, and it sounds like maybe just now, for whatever reason, there were people that realized that changes have been made or are being enforced in a certain way. So I think even if we decide as a council not to do anything differently, once we take a closer look at it, it's important for us to at least revisit it, because we have received some of those concerns from our residents. The only other thing I wanted to mention, I did bring some information for the rest of council about the MML Annual Meeting. And I wanted to highlight, I guess we're talking about the possible Transit Center grand opening event in September, and the annual meeting for MML in Lansing is September 17th through the 20th. So I don't know if that's something that can be taken into consideration. I'm going to be attending, and I am going to be encouraging the other members of council that might be available to attend as well, so pardon?
It's in Detroit.
Right, it is in Detroit. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting it confused with the state bar of Michigan, which is in Lansing. So it's in Detroit, but there's a lot of events going on, so if there's any way we can kind of keep that in mind when we're scheduling, that would be great. Thanks.
Councilman Teetz?
To follow up on discussion item we had during budget study sessions, when we discussed the following, the ICMA's recommendation to investigate outside bids for prosecution services, and we kind of said by July 1. And I wanted to bring that up and kind of inquire about status or where we are at in that process, and just kind of open that up for discussion, since we haven't addressed it, and now it's the 22nd of July.
City Attorney Bloom?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would just indicate, first of all, we've had one of our four attorneys, we are short step to begin with, and one of our attorneys has been out for about three months. So that's put things back a little bit for us. But it is something that, again, I think that the directive in the budget sessions was to bring a mechanism to city council to figure out how you wanted to proceed. And so that is something that we do intend to do, we meaning the manager and I, I think, jointly will be working to bring something to city council.
Did you want to date specific on?
Yeah, I think we need date specific. I mean, July 1 was date specific, and so the initial budget study sessions were in March, I believe. Is that correct? Or is that?
There were some, I have a recollection of October, so would that be?
I don't have the information, Mayor, because it was just brought up just before the meeting, so I didn't have a chance to look it up.
Whatever it is, maybe we could shoot for October?
Sooner.
Sooner? September? Mid-September?
Be long enough, I mean.
You want to bring up, do you have a date in mind?
Yeah, let's, we'll do it the August 26th. I don't see, this has lingered, and we need to give direct direction. I get the feeling like there hasn't been a direction given to the staff. And so let's give them a direction that, to bring forward a process as far as, one, how to secure outside bids for our consideration for prosecution services. Let's set a date as far as what day we'd like to see this process brought up. And then also, finally, let's see some type of, I'm going to say RFP or whatever the correct terms are, so that, so we can, we can at least have something to discuss. And I guess we've had a period of time pass, and I realize that there have been changes as far as staffing levels and so forth. But at the end of the day, the council's given direction on this once. I'd like to see this through. So, you know, if by the 26th of August, that's two meetings from now, we could have all that in hand, that's, I think, what we need.
I'm not sure if, are you talking about just the process by then?
You're right. You're right. The process could be easily done by then. I totally agree with you.
Okay.
As far as deciding what that process is.
Okay. I don't have any problem with a process being that quickly, but there's no way in the world, I don't think we could do anything more than that in a two-week, or a two, you know, so. If we could get some, is there consensus, something on the 26th, just on the process that might be used?
Process and timing.
And timing.
Could I just get clarification on one thing? We're talking about the process for, are we talking about a study session, or are we going to bring that here? Do you go in a study session, since it's real issue-specific, and sit around the table and really discuss this? Or since it's just the process, that's something that just comes back to this council for direction, further direction? Is that what we're saying?
I think we're going to need a study session to discuss the specifics. Yeah. But if there was going to be a discussion about the process that might be used, I think in two weeks, that would be good. But we are going to have to have a study session on this issue.
The 26th, we'll just bring it back to the regular council, because we're talking about the process. Is that right? Okay, I guess that makes sense. No?
For my clarification, on the 26th, what would you like to see handed to us at that point? I'm, just so everyone's on the same page.
When we took a look at this once before, and we did look at the law department before during the ICMA study, okay? There was a conclusion from that. If we are going to look at a different, just for, that was for the entire law department. Now, if we're going to just look specifically for the prosecution, what is the Now, if we're going to just look specifically for the prosecution, what is the process that we're going to use to look at that? Is that going to be to ask the ICMA to take a look at it again? Are we going to look for a third party to look at it again, or do you want to do that amongst us? I am not at the point, and maybe others are, that we're going to go do an RFP on this and find out what the costs are going to be at this point. I think we need to know how the investigation is going to go about. Now, if you want to do more than that, I think we need, I don't like to have discussions here. Let's have a study session and talk about it, specific then. Councilman Henderson?
I think the discussion is appropriate, but what was the date that we were? August 20th?
August? Two meetings from?
Two meetings? Okay.
Two meetings from now.
No reason we could have that next meeting? The discussion?
Well, we have, we have a couple, we have a public hearing that night, and we have an evaluation that night, which was, which is a study session item, probably. So I don't think that would be a good night. If you want to have a study session on August the 26th to talk about the process, I'll be more than happy to do, to do that. And then we can get specific after that study session. Councilman Teetz?
Go ahead.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
I think the study session's filed on August the 26th, but not to come with a blank piece of paper. There should be, I think, at that study session, a process recommendation, maybe from our city manager at this point, a process recommendation that we would go through. And then we look at that at the study session and modify it or whatever, and see what we can agree with. But I think we need to have something on the table, if possible, at that study session, if that's possible.
I don't know if I'm ready to do a recommendation, but certainly all the alternatives for the work study session on the 26th might, would be, would be a good route, but I don't know that I, I'd have to really have a lot of discussion before I give a recommendation on what we're doing. I haven't even looked at what process, I mean, we're talking about an RFP already. I don't even, we don't even know what the cost is to provide the service internally. I think you would want to know a lot of that kind of stuff.
Yeah, we have to have a study session first.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, the walkaway is this, is that the city manager will develop something for us to discuss on the 26th as far as options and so forth? Is that correct?
Correct. And of course, that will be in conjunction with discussions with the city attorney.
Absolutely. I'm certain Mr. Kishnik will certainly seek my input and.
Can't do without.
Okay. Other council comments? Next are reports. Any discussion on the reports that we received for the council meeting? There are no study items, no closed session. We are adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight.